I call this the December 15th, 2020 meeting of the Lincoln County Commission to Order. Our invocation tonight, and I'm looking, Joseph, the Minister of Melina Baptist Church, is he in the house? I don't see him. Ed Sims, our Lincoln County Attorney, would you please do our invocation tonight? Our pledge of allegiance tonight will be given by the two Governor Volunteer Star winners from Lincoln County. Our adult winner is Melanie Kelso. Melanie is the pre-K teacher here at Lincoln Central Academy. She's deeply involved with volunteering for literacy education in our community. She's a National Stewart to two Lincoln County Little Free Libraries. She's a founding mentor for the Tennessee Promise Mentor Program and has served on the Imagination Library Board. She also hosts Literacy Night each year at her school, and she was awarded the Scholastic Red Apple Teacher Award and numerous other education awards. She was a member of the 2012 Leadership Lincoln Class, and she has served on that board. Our youth winner is Harold Canada. Harold is a member of the Student Advisory Board of the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, the Fayetteville Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, and the Tourism Bureau. He was instrumental in organizing the annual fundraising golf tournament, very essential part of the success of Host of Christmas Pass and the Slaw Burger Festival. He earned the Chamber Scholarship based on his outstanding work with them and in our community. He volunteered in the county mayor's office for several months, and from June through January worked approximately 400 hours while also volunteering with the Chamber and working part-time at a local grocery. As a homeschool individual, he maintained a high grade point average and also a high ACT score. At this time, you would stand for our invocation by Ed Sims and our pledge by Melanie Kelso and Harold Canada.
Let's bow our heads. We pause at the end of this beautiful day to give thanks for all the blessings in life. Father, during these difficult times, we give special thanks to all the essential workers who continue to serve us, care for our needs, and continue to show up for work day after day. Father, we ask your guidance tonight as this body takes up the business of the county. May the decisions of this body be in accordance with your will. All this we ask in his name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Harold. Thank you, Melanie, and thank you, Ed. At this time, if you would, answer the roll call electronic, please.
Steve Graham.
Steve. And Ms. Shirley. Oh, Ms. Shirley.
Mm-hmm. I can make her present if we... But I have to finish it first.
Okay.
And then mark her present. I have 20 present.
Okay, including?
Including Ms. Shirley.
Okay. We have 20 commissioners present, four absent. Under announcements, about the only thing is I can't emphasize too much of the seriousness of the COVID-19 in our community at this time. We had 156 positive cases today. We are increasing at a rate faster than I think any other communities in Tennessee. You need to be safe. Most of the transmission is occurring in homes. It's not at Walmart. It's when you're having gatherings and people coming in close contact in homes. Please be careful. The best thing you can do now is limit that the people that actually live in your home are the people that are visiting there now. If you've got any questions, we'll go over that, but same things have been in effect: distancing, masking when necessary, hand cleanliness, and if you're sick or feel bad, please stay home. The vaccinations will start next week with first-line health care and responders and the residents of nursing homes. We will be getting about 800 and some odd doses in Lincoln County for that first round. It will be the Pfizer vaccine, and there will be a second dose about 21 days later. So we're updating daily. If you listen to WYTM at about 8:40 in the morning, we're giving that update. If you've got any questions, please call our office. I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes. We have two in there: our regular November 17th commission meeting, our special call meeting for December the 2nd. Would entertain a motion for approval of those as they were printed in your packet. Commissioner Bradford makes motion. Commissioner Bryant seconds it. Any questions or comments on either of those minutes? If not, all those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved, Madam Clerk. You should have received nine monthly or quarter committee meeting minutes in your packet. Would like a motion acknowledged in a receipt of those seven minutes? Commissioner Douglas makes motion, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. Any questions on any of those? All those acknowledging, say aye.
Aye.
Any who didn't receive them? No? Thank you. Now we're moving into consideration for District 6. We need a motion accepting the resignation of Roger Martinez, who was a commissioner from District 6. You received that in your packet. Commissioner Cunningham makes the motion. Commissioner Reviss seconds. All those in favor of accepting his resignation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? His acceptance of that, it passes. Now nominations for filling that slot from District 6 are open. Commissioner Graham recognized. Pat Haynes has been nominated. Any other nominations? Commissioner Walker. Waylon Young has been nominated. Commissioner Holland. Joseph Faulkner has been nominated. Commissioner Guin. Bill Askins has been nominated. Seeing no more nominations, do I have a motion that those nominations cease? So Commissioner Spray makes motion. Commissioner Thorpe seconds. All in favor of nomination ceasing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? No? Nominations have ceased. At this time, I will give the opportunity to any of the nominees to speak if they would like to at this time, starting in alphabetical order with Bill Askins. If you would like to speak, you can come to the microphone right here, and we'll limit it to five minutes.
I'd love for you folks to know me. That may be good, may not be good, but I was elected 2010, served four years, and then in 2014, I was elected for four more. But my stenograph got on me and I don't even can pronounce it, something else, but I had to get out after the six years. But I changed doctors. I quit going to Chattanooga. I got a good one in Huntsville. They changed my medicine, and everything's better. There's no cure for it. It's just a slow, slow wearing you down. But I just thought since the people had elected me that second time to finish up eight years, and with Roger getting out, that'd be two. That would give me my eight. So that's the reason I don't care what board I'm on or what it doesn't matter to be. I vote to swear that, but I vote what I think is right, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Askins. Next one, Joseph Faulkner, if you would like to speak.
My name's Joseph Faulkner. Mayor Newman, Commissioners, thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. Thank you to Commissioner Holland for nominating me, and I also appreciate many of the Commissioners that took the time over the past couple of weeks to talk to me about my qualifications, my vision, as well as my... The challenges I see that do face Lincoln County. I was born... I was raised in Van Town to Robbie and Patricia Faulkner, who still live there today. But my family lineage actually has been tied to the 6th District since my ancestors immigrated from Ireland to the Belleville area in the 1850s. I'm married to Hannah Gray Faulkner, and we have a seven-month-old daughter, Roma. I'm sure you've heard her squealing in the back there. She keeps us on our toes. But I graduated from Tennessee Tech University with a bachelor's in mechanical engineering and a master's in business, and I currently work as a mechanical engineer. But I see a very prosperous future for Lincoln County, but I have no illusions about the many challenges that we do face. I know that with the... That's why I want to work here on the commission. I feel like I can work with a lot of you to solve problems. I know the 21st century is only a quarter way in, but we've... It's packed quite the challenges in it, and it's packed a lot in just this year. So I fear that if we do not have a plan for these unique challenges, and we don't face them head-on with new innovative approaches, I fear that we're just going to be another statistic, and we're going to join many of the other rural communities around the country in decline. Like I said, as an engineer, it's essential that my day-to-day is solving problems. So I believe that that experience has uniquely positioned me in this moment of time to step up and help solve those problems with many of you. Lincoln County has... Is... Has just made me the man I am today. It showed me the value of hard work and the value of loving your neighbor and picking them up when times get rough. So that community aspect is really what also drove me to want to do this, to give back to the community that raised me. Lincoln County owes me nothing, but I owe it everything, and that's why I want to serve on this commission, to open up opportunities to all the citizens of this county, no matter what their last name is, no matter what their socioeconomic status is. They all deserve that from all of us. So that's why I stand here today, asking for your vote, your support, to help forge a new path for Lincoln County, one that's prosperous and includes everybody in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faulkner. Next, Pat Haynes.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm retired now from Fayetteville Public Utilities. I have lots of time. I'd love to serve my community. I love Lincoln County. My grandchildren are here. I want to make it better. I have the time to put into it, and I would really love your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Next, Waylon Young.
Thank you for the opportunity. Just to put my hat in the ring for this, I've lived in Lincoln County my whole life. I guess I said Lincoln County doesn't owe me anything, but I owe it everything. There's really... There's really not a lot... I have to say, my family lives here. They've lived here all their life, and I just want to see that continue. It's been a loving community, a safe community and an affordable community for all the citizens here, so I just want to help carry that on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Okay, procedure on this. We will have roll call. When your name is called, you will answer to one of the names you would like to vote for. If the majority now will be 12, we only have 23 commissioners that are eligible to vote, so 12 will be a majority. If no one receives 12 on the first vote, we will drop the low one and vote again. Any questions on this? And we'll proceed in that order, dropping the low one until we have a majority of 12 voting for one candidate. Everybody ready? Madam Clerk?
Reviss. Thorpe. Britt. Dangerfield. Taylor. Jean. Oh, sorry, he's absent. I have seven for Askins, two for Faulkner. Nine, Haynes, one for Young. Eighteen, nineteen.
One for Young.
One for Young.
Okay. The next round will be dropping Young, and if you'll go in reverse order for that. So the choices at this time will be Haynes, Faulkner, or Askins. And we're starting in reverse order of the names as we did the other time. Madam Clerk?
Douglas. Taylor. Britt. Spray. Hunter. Bradford. Mitchell. Guin. Ashley. Thorpe. Reviss. Brown. Seven for Askins.
Okay.
Ten for Haynes.
Okay.
Two for Faulkner.
Okay. Faulkner will be dropped on round three. If you will start at one of the other districts that you did not start within the previous two rounds. The choices this time will be Askins or Haynes.
Spray. Taylor. Brown. Eight for Askins, eleven for Haynes.
Okay, there's not a majority. We can have another round of voting and see if we would require one more to change. If it was for Haynes to receive it, it would require four more to change for Askins to receive a majority. So if you would call a roll again, starting in a district we haven't started with before.
Okay.
Everybody understand?
I don't have them separated by district on the call sheet.
Okay.
But I am trying to be random.
That's fine.
Holland. Guntherberg, I'm sorry, absent. Cunningham. Reviss. Thorpe. Britt. Bradford. Twelve for Haynes, I'm sorry, twelve for Haynes, seven for Askins.
Okay. This time, we'll give you the opportunity to make it a unanimous vote if you'd like. Pat Haynes has been elected to fill that position. If you would call the roll one more time, and if you want to make it unanimous that Pat Haynes is the new commissioner from District 6, we'll allow that at this time. Madam Clerk?
Graham. Sanders. Walker. Brown. Reviss. Thorpe. Ashley. Guin. Mitchell. Bradford. Hunter. Spray. Britt. Dangerfield. Taylor. Cunningham. Bryant. Douglas. Guntherberg. I'm sorry, he's absent. I don't have them all marked. Nineteen in favor. We're unanimous.
Okay. Pat, if you'll come up, we're going to swear you in. You can vote as the commissioner from the 6th District from the rest of the meeting. What about... Why don't you just do it down there at the speaker down there? Honorable Judge Andy Meyer will swear in Pat Haynes, the new commissioner from District 6. Congratulations, Mr. Haynes.
Okay.
All right, you raise your right hand if you have any... I, Pat Haynes?
I, Pat Haynes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Which I've been elected.
Which I've been elected.
And which I'm about to assume.
And which I'm about to resume.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of Tennessee.
Of Tennessee.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And to faithfully perform the duties.
And to faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of County Commissioner.
Of the Office of County Commissioner.
Representing the 6th District.
Representing the 6th District.
Of Lincoln County, Tennessee.
Of Lincoln County, Tennessee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, Judge Meyer.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item, Dr. Bill Heath, Director of County Schools, update on our building program. Yes, sir.
Just to give you guys a quick update on our building program. First of all, at Lincoln County High School, the wing for our STEM classrooms and STEM labs, it's project complete, project over, punch list has been completed, and the numbers as far as dollars under budget or in-kind money that we have that have come back to us, somewhere between $370,000 and $400,000, counting the contingency dollars. So we're very proud of that. Thank you, Mr. Bryant and your staff, for helping oversee that and making that happen in such a good, timely, efficient manner. At Blanche, the school is still ahead of schedule. You might recall there are three sections being built. We've referred to Section A, Section B, and Section C. Section A is the lower grades classroom. Section B is the upper grades classroom, and Section C is the back part of the building, which includes the cafeteria, the gymnasium, other commons areas, and that sort of stuff. Just to give you an update, if you go into Section A or Section B at this point in time, it actually is starting to look like classrooms when you walk in the rooms. There's cabinets there. The ceiling grid has been hung, no tiles yet, but the ceiling grid is hung. It has power, there's heating and air. You walk in the rooms, the lights come on. It's a modern technology in that aspect, too, and energy savings things in place. So that's really, really good to know, and like, I think I mentioned this, the cabinets are in place. So it looks like a classroom now in all of those rooms. Section C is in the back of the building, like I said. The biggest thing you would see right now, if you went there, you'd see the gymnasium starting to... Starting to look like a gymnasium. It's a few weeks away, but it's... The paint... Painting is happening. The floors are on the way. Hopefully, over the next three or four weeks, they'll be delivered, and installation will begin on the gymnasium floors, and then the other floors throughout the building also, the tile floors, hopefully will be starting to take shape. And I can't wait to give you guys a tour of both facilities. I know we put that... Uh, I know we put that off because of COVID-19, but, uh, that is still in our plans as a school board and, uh, to have a, an open house and, and give you guys a special invitation to both facilities, uh, once we can get up and running on those.
Any questions, Dr. Heath? Thank you, Bill. Next item, consideration for approval of resolution honoring the memory of our late County Commissioner, Mike Brown. Attorney Sims?
This is a resolution honoring the memory of the late Michael Aiden Brown, former member of the Lincoln County Legislative Body. Whereas on September the sixth, twenty twenty, the many friends and associates of Michael Aiden Brown were saddened to learn of his death at age sixty-nine. He passed away in his home on his farm on the land that he loved. And whereas Michael Aiden Brown was born on May thirty, nineteen fifty-one, in Memphis, Tennessee, the son of the late George Emile Brown Senior and Louise Farrell Brown. And whereas Mr. Brown was married to, to Dana McGee Brown for forty-five years. And they have two children, Ben Brown and Karen Elmore. Grandchildren Aiden Avery and Emmett Brown and Emily Louise Elmore. And whereas he graduated from Petersburg High School, where he was senior class president and a member of the basketball and football teams and letter club. He was an active member of Future Farmers of America, FFA. He was presented FFA's top award as Middle Tennessee Star Farmer in nineteen seventy. He earned his Bachelor of Science degree in agribusiness from Middle Tennessee State University in nineteen seventy-seven, where he was a founding father of the Alpha Gamma Row fraternity. Whereas agriculture was always a central part of Mr. Brown's life. Mr. Brown was the, was the live production manager for Tyson Foods for twenty-eight years and owner of Cars Inc. for the past twenty years. He owned Tyson Chicken Houses, enjoyed farming and raising cattle. He established B and K Farms in nineteen eighty-eight and shared the love of agriculture with his children, Ben and Karen. His involvement in the Sematol breed changed from simply raising cattle to purchasing, marketing, and exhibiting Sematol cattle across the country. Their farm is still thriving and producing quality Sematol cattle and genetics today. He was also named the twenty nineteen Herdsman of the Year with the Tennessee Sematol Association. And whereas Mr. Brown was a member of the Petersburg Cumberland Presbyterian Church. And Mr. Brown served with distinction on the Lincoln County Legislative Body for twelve years as a county commissioner. He served on the Personnel, Finance, and Budget Committees, as well as the Hospital and Fair Board. And now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Lincoln County Legislative Body do hereby wish and desire to express to the family of Mr. Brown our sincere condolences and sympathy and to express to them, as well as his many friends and associates, our sincere appreciation for the many years of devoted and distinguished service rendered to Lincoln County and this community by Mr. Brown. And be it further resolved that this resolution of respect and esteem be spread upon the minutes of the Lincoln County Legislative Body and that a copy thereof be forwarded to his wife and children. This the seventeenth day of November, twenty twenty. Uh, Bill Newman, County Mayor, Phyllis F. Count, County Clerk.
What's the will of the commission at this time? Commissioner Mitchell makes the motion. Commissioner Douglas seconds. All those in favor of approval of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? If you would present, present that to the family members at this time that are, pardon?
Where are these?
Is that the only one we have right now? I did, I did not bring, we'll get those to you. I'm sorry that we don't have the presentation ones. I'll get them to you. Ben, thank you very much. Thank y'all for y'all's dedication to Lincoln County and allowing us to share him while he served our county. Thank you. Our next item is a resolution, um, for the state acquisition of Martin Methodist College being established as a, as a fourth undergraduate campus for the University of Tennessee system. Does anybody want me to read this or does, I, I'll try to answer any questions. We met last week with, uh, the officials from Martin College and also through a Zoom meeting with, uh, Randy, the president, um, of, Randy Boyd, president of UT. I hope you're in favor of this because it's a very positive thing for not only Lincoln County, but, uh, surrounding counties around Giles County. I'll answer any questions at this time. Procedure on this would be, uh, the, um, state legislature would have to adopt this and then there would have to be money in the governor's budget, uh, for running the college. Uh, they're not requesting any money from Lincoln County for this, but I think it's a very positive. Any questions before I ask for a motion? Entertain a motion for approval of this resolution. Commissioner Thorpe makes a motion. Commissioner Walker seconds. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Next item. Would Ed Sims, the, uh, Lincoln County Health System EMS Resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a, a very lengthy resolution. I'm sure you've all had a chance to read through it. Uh, this is a resolution that's, uh, being adopted by several of our adjoining counties. Uh, we've looked at two of the resolutions, Giles and Bedford, and we've patterned this one after Bedford because it seemed to be the, the best one. The Hospital Board has adopted this resolution and recommends this to the County Commission to adopt. Uh, and I'll be happy to answer any questions on this. Uh, basically it allows this, uh, commission to, uh, regulate ambulance service in this county. Uh, we can, we've got the authority to, uh, deny anybody else from getting in the ambulance business if we adopt this resolution. And that's something that we probably need to do. All the other county, the other counties do that. We can, we can also allow another, uh, ambulance, uh, service in the county if we could possibly want to, but they'd be under all these stringent regulations. So it'd be very difficult for them to do that. Uh, this, uh, is, uh, based on the authority granted by two statutes, and I won't go through those because I'm sure you probably, uh, probably bore you. But anyway, we do have the authority to do this. Uh, this seems to be a good resolution to adopt and maybe it's overdue. Uh, many of the adjoining counties in Tennessee are, are adopting this resolution. Uh, Richard Wright and, uh, Mr. Blaylock, I believe, are here to discuss it further if you have any questions. And I think they could probably answer your questions better than I could. Uh, or I could just read the resolution, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like for me to.
I'd rather you not.
Okay, thank you.
But if any commissioner would like to, um, we'll let you go in the hall and read it to them.
Yes, sir.
What's the will of the commission?
I have some questions. I'm sorry?
What? Well, basically, they probably can answer, but I can, because another ambulance service could come in and skim off all the profitable calls within the county and we can't do anything about it. That's bottom line.
The, the ambulance service, it's a, it's a public service and the legislature have given us the right to, given us a monopoly over that. And we can, we can control all that and we can exclude anybody we'd like to, but we can contract with somebody, someone if we'd like to, if that should be the choice of this commission. But it does gives up, give us some teeth to, uh, to, to control this very important service.
And it gives us guidelines as far as the quality of that service if we did approve one. Uh, because they would have to be the same quality as what we're providing through our ambulance service at this time.
One more question. Are we still gonna be able to bring in the neonatal from Hemsley and Huntsville for our babies? When we have a critical baby, will we be able to bring that ambulance service in to pick them up? Or do they gotta have authority from the administration or? You understand what I'm saying?
Bob is saying yes, but do you need a further explanation than that? He said yes.
I mean, do they have to go to him to get it approved if it's an emergency? Or we gotta get the doctor, the EMS, uh, somebody to approve this? Or does the doctor have this authority?
We're already affiliated with Huntsville Hospital, but Bob, do you need to address that? Or Richard?
It's Darryl, by the way.
Darryl. You know, a mess does a lot for some people.
Bob's my brother. I knew who you meant.
Excuse me, Darryl. Darryl Blaylock, CEO of, uh, Lincoln Health System.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Richard Wright, uh, Director of Ambulance Services with us tonight. I'm sorry.
No problem, no problem.
We see Bob, you know, a whole lot, so, excuse me.
Understand.
Darryl Blaylock, CEO of Lincoln Health System.
To answer your question, Commissioner, if, um, the need arise to have a, uh, the neonatal service come in, whether it's from Huntsville or, or Nashville at Vanderbilt, um, we would not allow them, but they would definitely be able to come into the county and, uh, transport that, uh, patient. We don't have the capabilities to transport that patient with our ambulance service for that, um, expertise or that specialized care that is needed for that infant at that time. So, and we would not object to that at all. We would, uh, more than willing to, uh, have their help in, in the transfer. Richard, anything you need to add to that? Does that answer your question? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion by Commissioner Taylor to approve. Commissioner Holland seconds. Any further discussion or question? All those in favor of, of approval of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Next item, uh, consideration for approval to reelect Tori Young as a commission member and Cole Smith as a farm member to the Ag Committee. Those terms would expire January twenty twenty-three. What's the will of the commission on this one? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion. Commissioner, uh, excuse me, Hunter, seconds it. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Do both lead candidates meet the requirements that the state puts down for a part of the county that they didn't?
They're already, this is a reappointment. I do, I don't know. You know, when David nominates one, we usually just take his word for it. Uh, so I cannot answer that question. If you want to delay it, we will, but I don't know the answer. All those in favor of approval, Tori Young and Cole Smith, uh, to continue as a reappointment on the Ag Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Next one, consideration for approval to elect Vanessa Brazelton to the Ag Committee. Gail Quarter has served the limit of her terms and this, uh, would expire January twenty twenty-three. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bryant makes a motion of approval. Commissioner Douglas seconds. Any questions or comments on this? All in favor of approval, Ms. Brazelton, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval to reelect Linda Keith to the Ardmore Giles Lincoln Industrial Development Board. That term expires January twenty twenty-seven. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Walker makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Graham seconds. Any questions? Comments? All in favor of her approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Now that, uh, Roger Martinez, um, resigned from the commission, we have some, uh, committee slots to fill. The first one for consideration of approval to fill one slot on the beer board due to that resignation. That term would expire September twenty twenty-two. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Holland? Okay, I need a name. Or you want Pat Haynes to? Okay. We have a motion for Pat Haynes to fill that position. Do I have a second to the motion? Commissioner Walker seconds it. Discussion on this item? All those in favor of Commissioner Haynes filling that slot, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Congratulations, Commissioner Haynes. Next item, consideration for approval to reappoint Commissioner Britt to the Federal Main Street Board. That term would expire January twenty twenty-four. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Dangerfield makes a motion for approval, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor of, of, of reappointing Commissioner Britt to the Main Street Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Congratulations, Commissioner Britt. Consideration for approval to reappoint Pat Haynes to the ISWA. That term would expire January thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. And he knows he's gonna lose a hundred dollars a month when he got appointed commissioner, so, uh, sorry about that, Pat. Do, uh, what's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Ashley makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. Any questions or comments on this? All those in favor of that reappointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Congratulations. Next item, consideration for approval to fill one slot on the Rules and Legislative Committee. This was, uh, due to the resignation of Roger Martinez. That term would expire September twenty twenty-two. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Thorpe makes a motion. Commissioner Hunter seconds. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Commissioner Haynes filling that position, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Congratulations again, Commissioner Haynes. Next item, consideration for approval to reappoint Commissioner Dangerfield and Commissioner Taylor to the Tax Relief Committee. That term would expire January twenty twenty-two. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Revis. Any questions on this item? All in favor of the rea, of the approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval to reappoint Commissioner Walker to the Zoning Appeals Board. That term would expire January twenty twenty-six. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Graham makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. The next item, I got ahead of myself on this, on, uh, the, um, redistricting committee. It's going to be late spring before we even know numbers on the census. And really, there's not a lot for the commission to do other than this. You know, we've had, uh, C Task, Robin Roberts came down, spoke to the commission, some suggestions and items about, um, redistricting after the census. The biggest thing that the commission needs to decide is, do we want to change anything about district and number of commissioners? The basic redistricting is done by professionals like at C Task. Um, so for the next few months, y'all need to be thinking about if you want changes or not because y'all have the authority to change that once every ten years. And this year coming up is the year. You can leave it like it is, you can change the number of commissioners, you can change the number of districts. It's all up to y'all. Uh, so, uh, be thinking about it. We'll bring it up, um, in a few months as far as where we want to go with this. Any questions on this? Okay. Next three items, I'll turn over to our Director of Planning and Zoning, Ms. Nancy Harris. And, um, it's her birthday today.
Happy birthday.
So, uh, So, Commissioner Hunter had suggested we sing.
No.
If we do, will you lead it? If you do, stand up and lead it.
There you go.
We gonna sing with you if you get up.
Oh, gosh.
Don't make suggestions. That's pretty weak.
It is, isn't it?
It, it's pretty weak. Okay.
Okay.
Since he won't sing, Ms. Harris, if you would.
All right. First on the agenda was a consideration for approval to call for a public hearing to rezone a parcel along Highland Rim Road, banked on the south by Moncks Road. That has been rescinded, so that is no longer an option to vote. Commissioner Cunningham?
We would like to go ahead and vote for that session, public hearing, right? Public hearing.
No, sir. I, I got a call from one of the partners, and he asked to rescind the whole thing.
Not something they, they want to be with us after January 1st, and we need to approve that, just so we'll be ready in case there's changes.
Okay. If we do approve the public hearing, then the certified letters have to go out tomorrow. So, somebody from that company, JCF, will have to come in, pick up the letters, and mail them out, and I think there are forty, thirty-seven, so that's like two hundred and twenty-five dollars, two hundred and thirty dollars.
Let me check, I'll wait until the next one, then we'll come back to that.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Okay. We'll skip over to the next one, which will be, uh, let's see, consideration for approval of file number ZR 2020-7. This is a, an amendment request to the zoning resolution, Article II, general provisions to remove Section 2.100, which dealt with fences and walls. We had the public hearing earlier this evening with no comments.
Okay. And one, before we move on that, a few months ago, Commissioner Ogle brought up a motion that no action was taken on this when it was under the guidance of planning and zoning. I would need a motion before we do whatever action we take on this, that any pending action by the county commission and the planning and zoning, that there would be no action, and it would go back to the articles that are quoted in this section. Need a motion to that effect, just far as clearing this up. Y'all understand what I'm asking? Well, I'd entertain a motion from someone to that effect. Commissioner Douglas makes a motion. Do I have Commissioner Sprague seconds? Any questions or comments on? We're not voting on rescinding the, um, the fencing and zoning. We're talking about when we said we were not gonna take any action, and that would be taken away, that it would be turned back over if this passes to the highway superintendent. All in favor of that action, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Now, we're back to the consideration for approval of the ZR 2027 amendment. Do I have a motion to the effect of that? Mr. Douglas makes a motion. Commissioner Cunningham, will you second it, or you want? Okay. Any questions on this item? Y'all understand what we're doing? This gives the act. Tim, do you want to talk?
I'm just about to turn to read the test, he doesn't.
Okay.
This is TCA Code 54-7-201, obstruction of roads, bridges, and ditches, penalty removal. The chief administrative officer is authorized to remove or cause to be removed any fence, gate, or other obstruction from the roads, bridges, and ditches of the county, and to clean out and to clear all fences and ditches along or adjacent to the county roads. Any person who places or maintains an obstacle or obstruction upon the right-of-way of any county road and refuses to remove the obstacle or obstruction upon direction of the chief administrative officer, to do so commits a Class C misdemeanor. It is a Class C misdemeanor to place or cause or to be placed any obstruction upon the right-of-way or in the ditches along any county road, except that transmission lines, telephone or telegraph lines, or poles may be placed on and along the right-of-way of any county road, under the, under the direction and with the permission of the chief administrative officer. The chief administrative officer is defined in Section TCA 54-7-103. For the purposes of this chapter, chief administrative officer is defined as the county road superintendent, county road supervisor, director of public works, county engineer, or similar county highway official either elected or appointed pursuant to any general or private act of this state.
Does everybody understand that? What we're basically doing is, Tim Gill had the authority before that Section 2.100 about fences and walls. He had the authority before this was added. So, basically, we're clearing it up. We're taking out anything in planning and zoning. Tim still has the authority to do what Nancy just read. Any questions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Doug, are you ready to go back to yours, or you want us to go to item three?
Let's go to item three.
Okay. Item three, Ms. Nancy.
This is file number 2020-R2, Todd and Amber Gross rezoning request. This is a request to rezone property at 3166 Huntsville Highway, from A2, which is suburban residential, to C1, general commercial. Public hearing was held earlier this evening with three comments, one from Bruce Knave. Do you want me to read them all, for the purpose of this meeting?
Is there a request that you get the comments that were in the public hearing today? Or is everybody here? I don't see a request to be read.
Okay. We had three comments, they were all addressed. Um, let's see. This, this item was previously put before the planning commission, and was recommended approval on November 5th of 2020, and you should have your staff, my staff, report in your, on your slates.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Sanders seconds. Any questions? All those in favor of approval of zoning change, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. I think, um, if it's okay, we'll go ahead with, and come back to yours when, I think, Commissioner Cunningham stepped out, tried to find out an answer about that. We don't have anyone here with IDB report. You should have got an email, and there were some handouts, I, I think that Kim gave you when you came in. If you've got any questions on that, I'll get them answered for you. Seeing none, we'll move to the Budget Committee report. Donnie Ogle had surgery, and he's recovering, and I think he's doing fine. But Cole Bradford, is he behind the screen number one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll turn, I'll turn it over to you, Cole. Thank you.
Thank you. The Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, met pursuant to due notice in the library at Lincoln Central Academy on December 1st, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Members present were Doug Cunningham, Ricky Bryant, Kate Guin, Randy Bradford, Grady Revis, Steve Graham. Members absent were Donnie Ogle, Shirley Dangerfield. Others present were Finance Director Cole Bradford, County Attorney Ed Sims, Commissioner Mark Mitchell, Commissioner Stephanie Britt, Commissioner Charles Hunter, IT Director Matt McOliver, and Sandy Metcalf with the Sheriff's Department. Item one, Mayor Newman did not have any items for consideration. Item two, Sheriff's Department jail management software. It was included as an enhancement request, but no enhancements funded in the base budget. Proposals will be opened on December 9th, so that the Sheriff's Department staff can review and make a recommendation for commission consideration at the December 15th, 2020 meeting. Finance Director Bradford provided the following update prior to Sandy Metcalf presenting the request. Finance Director Bradford read the following motion from the May 2020 Budget Committee Minutes. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and passed unanimously by roll-call vote to approve the enclosed FY 2021 draft budget to be presented to the commission on Tuesday, May 19th, and published in the newspaper on Wednesday, May 20th, for the public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, June 2nd, at 6:00 p.m. The draft budget is a base budget that includes no enhancements due to the uncertainty with revenues. The committee plans to monitor revenues monthly, with the understanding that budget adjustments can be made once the county has a better grasp of the financial impact of the pandemic over the next several months. The Board of Education took this same approach and approved a status quo budget with no enhancements at this time. Finance Director Bradford provided a FY 1920 update for the 101 General Fund. The following revenues came in better than estimated for FY 1920. Sales tax, approximately ninety thousand. Hotel motel tax, approximately ten thousand. Business tax, approximately thirty-four thousand. Fees in lieu of salary, approximately fifty-five thousand. Additionally, most departments spent, spent less than estimated for FY 1920, which resulted in favorable budget variances. Finance Director Bradford provided some of the unexpected 101 General Fund highlights for the FY 2021 year thus far. First item, Lincoln County received the Governor's Local Government Support Grant on 7/23/20 in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. Due to the impact of COVID, the Governor and State Legislature allowed these funds to be used to offset the loss of local revenue or supplement local revenue. Originally, these funds had to be used for specific capital projects. Next item, Lincoln County received CARES Act grant funds on 10/15/20 in the amount of five hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Third item, local sales tax collections have remained remarkably strong to date. March 2020 compared to March 2019, up 5.5%. April compared to April last year, up 10.8%. May compared to May last year, up 13.7%. June compared to June last year, up 19.4%. July compared to July last year, up 18.5%. August compared to August last year, up 9.5%. September compared to September of last year, up 17.4%. Finance, Finance Director Bradford did note that investment income will likely be severely depressed beyond this fiscal year. Also, contract prisoner boarding revenue has been and will likely continue to be significantly lower, due to the need to keep the jail population as low as possible during the pandemic. At the last commission meeting, Mayor Newman asked Finance Director Bradford about some courthouse officials inquiring about a possible one-time, five-hundred-dollar bonus for county employees. Finance Director Bradford stated this item would need to go to the Budget Committee in December. Finance Director Bradford provided the committee with the following information. Approximately 101 General Fund employees, that excludes elected officials and Finance Director Bradford, there's roughly 161 employees, estimated cost 91,000. Solid waste employees, nine included, excluding elected officials and Finance Director Bradford, at a cost of 5,100 dollars. Approximately, out of the highway fund, there's approximately 28 employees, estimated cost 16,000. Sandy Metcalf and Matt McOliver presented in detail the need to upgrade their jail management software. This request was submitted in March 2020 as an enhancement request, but due to the pandemic, no enhancements were considered during the original, original budget approval. The one-time cost of upgrading is approximately, is approximately 92,000. The recurring annual cost is estimated to be 14,000. The Sheriff's Department currently pays roughly 3,000 per year, so the additional recurring cost would be 11,000 per year. Requests for proposals have been issued and will be opened on December 9th. The Sheriff's Department will evaluate the proposals and make a recommendation to the commission at the December 15th, 2020 meeting. Motion by Commissioner Guin, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed six yes, two absent, to recommend approval of increasing 101-54210-317 by 103,000 dollars, and decreasing 101-39,000 by 103,000 dollars, with 92,000 being one-time funding, and 11,000 being additional annual recurring funding.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Guin makes a motion for approval. Do we have a second? Commissioner Douglas seconds. Any questions? Cole, on this, if it's approved, then we still have to vote on acceptance of that contract that was the bid that just opened?
Yes, sir. And I'll cover that if approved next.
Yeah, okay. All right. Everybody understand what we're doing?
I need Ms. Shirley's to confirm.
Ms. Shirley, need you to confirm, please.
I wonder if we need a battery. Tell him to point this way. Caitlin, just push confirm. I, I got it. I got it.
Okay. And Bart?
I have 19 ayes, zero no.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry. Pats did not go through. I do have him in here, but it shows him as absent.
Okay.
Is it okay to cancel this, so I can mark him present, and they can re-vote?
Yes.
Okay. I apologize.
We'll go out to re-vote.
I'm sorry.
We didn't have Commissioner Haynes in the system.
Let me get him in here.
Doug, are you ready? Still want to wait?
I, I think we're gonna let it drop.
Okay. All righty. Okay. Do we need any official action on that, dropping it? Okay. We completed all your tasks for the night. Thank you, and thank you.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. Let's re-vote.
Cunningham's is not confirming.
Whose is it?
Cunningham.
Doug.
Okay.
Okay. And Bart?
Twenty ayes, and four absent.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Motion passes.
Okay. Next item, we have, we did open proposals on December 9th. All commissioners should have received an email from me yesterday. Basically, we did attach copies of both proposals received, and the sheriff and Sandy Metcalf also attached a recommendation letter with their justification. And at the bottom of the email that I sent you, I, I note here, I think the following motion would be appropriate if a commissioner chooses to concur with the sheriff's recommendation. Move to concur with the Sheriff's Department recommendation of awarding the RFP to M&amp;M Microsystems.
Okay. Do I have a motion from the commission to? Commissioner Guin makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bradford seconds. Any questions or discussions? We're accepting the recommended contract with that company. All those in favor of approval of that, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Cole?
Item three, Finance, Finance Director Bradford presented the following items. A, donor restricted donation from Park City Fire Department in the amount of 2,962. Motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, and passed six yes, two absent, to recommend approval of the donor restricted donation from Park City Fire Department in the amount of 2,962, and increase 101-48610 by that amount, and increase 101-54310-336 by the same amount.
Any objection if we take the next two as a group, all three?
by that amount, and increase 101-54-310-336 by the same amount.
Any objection if we take the next two as a group, all three of them? Okay. Seeing none, proceed.
Item B, donor restricted donation from Van Town Fire Department in the amount of $2,560. There was a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Revis, and passed six yes, two absent, to recommend approval of this donor restricted donation from Van Town Fire Department in the amount of $2,560, and increase 101-48-610 by 2,560, and increase 101-54-310-336 by 2,560. Next item, item C, is a donor restricted donation from Hawkins Incorporated to be used exclusively for the Lincoln County Fire Department in the amount of $1,000. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Revis, and passed six yes, two absent, to recommend approval of the donor restricted donation from Hawkins Incorporated in the amount of $1,000, and increase 101-48-610 by 1,000, and increase 101-54-310-336 by 1,000.
What's the will of the commission on these three items? Commission, uh, Commissioner Sprague makes a motion. Commissioner Mitchell seconds. Any questions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Cole?
Item D, 101 General Fund Budget Amendment. Motion by Commissioner Guin, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed six yes, two absent, to recommend approval of the attached 101 General Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Revis makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hunter seconds. Any questions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Cole?
Transfer of previously surplus Sheriff Tahoe to the Maintenance Director for County Maintenance Use. The Sheriff's Department has identified the surplus vehicle to be transferred if approved by the commission. Motion by Commissioner Revis, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed six yes, two absent, to recommend transferring a previously surplus Sheriff Tahoe to the Maintenance Director for County Maintenance Use.
What's the will of that, this item? Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion. Commissioner Guin seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval of that item, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Cole?
Item F, financials. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and passed six yes, two absent, to acknowledge receipt of the attached financials.
Okay. Entertaining motion, acknowledging receipt of the financials. Commissioner Bryant makes a motion. Commissioner Revis seconds. All those in favor saying they received those, please say aye. Anybody that didn't, no? Thank you, Cole.
Thank you.
Next item, our number 51. Madam Clerk?
I have Elizabeth Jones and Zachary Jones by Commissioner Thorpe, Vicky Afasov by Commissioner Young, Lori Thornton by Commissioner Cunningham, Dale Glegern and Stephanie Cobal by Commissioner Brown.
Any additions? I'd entertain a motion for approval of that list. Commissioner Thorpe makes a motion. Commissioner Bryant seconds. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Floor's now for any new business. Commissioner Cunningham? Motion by Mr. Cunningham and seconded by Commissioner Bryant. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Your adjourn.